Okay, I have seven o'clock. We'll call this the meeting here in order of the two. I have my allegiance, Steve, would you be the biggest in the way?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please do a prayer?
Yeah, well, our heads please. Heavenly Father, thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for this gathering of county officials. Thank you for the many blessings you give us, the freedoms you give us in this nation. Thank you for our community, our community leaders, those who serve us and ask you to protect sheriff and the police and all their first responders, healthcare workers as they go through this pandemic. Just pray for wisdom of the leaders to make wise decisions, healthcare leaders. Give us good information. Just ask that you'll give us wisdom in this council and all that we have to decide is to put this all under your guidance and you'll continue to bless us and we thank you and give you all the praise and glory. It's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here to the August fourth regular council meeting. We have six here, so we have a forum. I assume everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the prior meeting. Did anyone have any additions or corrections to that as men? Do I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion. Does it favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have a couple of transfers here. I'm sure that Lisa emailed those off to everyone. We did elect to tell those that from those departments, they did not need to attend for the transfers. And I think if, as I saw emails from people they looked at and had no real questions. So seeing there are no questions initially, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the transfers as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer as presented.
Second.
Motion through the second. Does it favor? Take your right hand. Raise your right hand. We'll keep you guys guessing. That's a six oh passes. Okay. So sheriff, please. We missed you last time, Doc Lomond.
We did, we did.
But the, but the information still comes through, so that's important.
Okay. I'll take us off for the purposes of speaking, please.
Sure.
Yes, I wasn't here last month. So one of the things I want to make mention in last month's meeting was the semi-annual commissary reporting, which was due. So I haven't made it into the minutes last week because I sent that out to you guys afterward. So
Yes.
if you guys would at least acknowledge that I sent that to you so I can make the minutes and because I'm required by statute to report that semi-annually. So
Oh, perfect.
As long as, as long as the auditor makes note of it in the minutes, then I think we're satisfied that. So
Okay.
I don't have a whole lot here. When I left work today, we had sixty-five inmates in jail, twenty-five are pre-trial superior, twelve pre-trial circuit, F-six, and eight DOC is our numbers as of today. I have been doing most misdemeanors being summoned into court and those type of things. You know, activity is up this summer. But so the numbers are really kind of skewed to compare them to last year's in some areas. And then the same goes for income generated. A lot of things through the courts as far as civil stuff and fees that were due were pushed out because of COVID and a lot of extensions were put out. So a lot of civil processing was not being served at the time or at least being enforced as far as financial payments for a lot of people. So a lot of those things were skewed as well.
So you're sensitive. This is going to come in well below what we've seen historically ever is, then?
Yeah. And again, you know, I've reminded several times, the DOC kind of is skewed because of the way they're paying on DOC now. So
Yeah.
to compare that to last year, there's half of the month, half of the year in 2019 where we were receiving all DOC payments, F-six and DOC together. That's why it's in the twenty thousands for those first six months and then they drop down. So, so yeah, but, but gun permits are strong. People are still buying gun permits. The four-year is free now as of July and the lifetime they still have to pay for it, but people are still buying. So that has not slowed down.
Is the process the same, however, that you have to come out to the sheriff's department and get your prints and all that?
Yep. The prints we don't do anymore. That's scheduled through, they do them at the library now.
It's at the family centered services, I think, FCS, yes.
They change locations. You have to call them and make an appointment. We used to do it the past state. Now doesn't charge the fee for it.
I must be an old guy because that's where I did it, at the sheriff's department.
Yeah. So unless there's any questions on that, I don't have a whole lot other than just kind of to reach out to you guys. I talked to commissioners on Monday. We've been working closely with the auditor's office on the CARES Act money that's been available to Harford County. We've made some purchases to make some changes as far as touchless things at the jail, as far as, I mean, as little as dispensers to faucet some things to some other things to try to help with the COVID. And that's what a lot of that money's for. We've got a couple metal detectors for our intake areas. So we don't have to, you know, to touch inmates as much to search because it will search. I'm meeting with a company next week on a body scanner for the facility. That's not just for metal. That's the internal if somebody comes into the facility with things in their system as far as trying to, you know, swallow drugs or that type of thing. This can come in. It's something that we've always looked for, but they are costly. It is approved through the CARES Act. So if you're going to buy it, just to buy it, there is a use for it and a couple deterrents for us. One, money. Two, space. The company I'm meeting with has a smaller footprint body scanner that is mobile. So you can move it around, a permanent fixture type thing. So I'll be meeting with them and I just wanted to get the approval through the commissioners on Monday to get the go-ahead if it is something that we feel is beneficial to our agency.
Scott, you'd place that back in your intake area where you come in the back or I mean, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, we're still undecided yet, but we may, we may put it in our salad port prior to them even making entry to the job. So our intake area is very small. So I think it would, I personally think it would cause a hazard or a fire hazard type violation if we tried to put it in the hallway in our intake area because there's really not a lot of room for that. So we put it in our salad port, which a lot of agencies do. You know, when somebody comes in, they could bring them in the salad port, take them directly to the body scanner, scan them. The concept's the same as like you would at an airport type thing. So it's very low radiation type thing. The one that I'm looking at, the exposure's so low, you could scan somebody up to a thousand times. So it's, it's a very good product. I think there's twenty-six other agencies in Indiana that have it right now. Allen County uses it. They have three units up there, one in their, two in their jail, one in community corrections. Adams County just bought one. Tipton County, a couple, a couple around here locally have just purchased that as well. So I've heard a lot of good things about it, but again, they're, they're coming down. So give us kind of a demo and meet with us on how that would be beneficial to our agency. So.
Okay.
Is there, is there one manufacturer for that or is there multiple?
Yeah, there's only one for that one because we tried to, to make sure we were meeting guidelines on that. It would fall under the special purchase because there's only one manufacturer. There's no middleman. It's actually on a QPA where they, I mean, you're not going to find it cheaper with one person or more expensive than others. The price is dictated on a QPA. So everybody's getting through the same amount of money. So they are the only man, and actually they're the only American manufacturer of a body scanner. All the other ones are manufactured outside the United States.
What's your deputy status? I know there were.
We are, we are fully staffed, but Deputy Springer, Sergeant Springer is still out on pregnant for his cancer. Everybody follows his Facebook page. His wife recently posted that he is at this point right now cancer-free. The mass in his chest is, there's stuff still there, but it's not cancer risk. So he's elected to keep doing his funeral, I think, for another month and then he's going to move to radiation treatment. So we're hoping to see him back here by the end of the year. So all, all things are looking very good.
The progress is good.
Yep. Everything is looking good for him. And like I said, other than that, we are fully staffed. Our newest hire that started a month or so ago is doing very well. Came from Hartford City with five years' experience. So he's already doing things, a lot of things on his own now. So he's, he's doing very well and good fit for our agency. So.
So you'd say the matrix process has been beneficial to staffing?
Yeah, we were discussing that today. I mean, with what's going on nationally, the whole COVID stuff, you know, on top of that brings restrictions to what we do. We're very fortunate to be where we are, not only in this community, because we feel a lot of support locally. We're fortunate that our guys have stuck it out because they literally could go somewhere else, you know, with less hassle and, you know, probably the same amount of money somewhere else. So I think it is, Adams County just called me today wanting a copy of our pay matrix. They are very
You said, ah, it's in the mail.
They are very
Did you intentionally lower it off so they were like?
I didn't tell me, you know, yeah, that could change if we, by next year.
It was a big jump. I mean, it was something that was there for the purpose of retention and certainly attraction. So.
Yes. And, and that, and that has shown, hasn't shown in the numbers of people that are applying, but we have been able to get quality people to fill the roles and attract, you know, people from other agencies that were quality people. So yeah, it's been a very good.
But Scott, I will say that, and I'm going to compliment your department because I've heard from, actually your new hire, Ed, that we are far and outstanding compared to other departments and other places he's worked. So I think that says a lot for our community, I think, in your, your staffing area.
I appreciate that.
Sheriff, out of curiosity, you mentioned the body scanner was used for CARES funds. Are there any other purchases or CARES funds available to you for any other things you see coming up in your future?
We are, like I said, we have purchased a lot of all the PPE and stuff we bought initially. Lisa has turned in already and we've been reimbursed for that already. And then with the metal detectors that I've already purchased and have showed up, we've, we've spent about thirty thousand, I know for our agency. The county, I believe, is
County is seventy-five.
County in a whole has spent seventy-five. The body scanner is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars essentially. That's typically cheap compared to most of them. They're usually around two to three hundred thousand dollars for those. So, but yeah, so we're continuing to look because obviously the deadline for that is the end of the year. We've been trying to look at, we've asked for some things and been told no. We have a company that we send stuff to and ask them if that fits the requirements or not. So again, I don't want to, you know, free money is nice money, but in a sense, somebody's going to pay for it eventually. But I want it to be beneficial for the agency and, and so we don't want to just go out and buy a whole bunch of stuff. We're looking at a lot of the big things right now is like UV lighting for sanitizing jail cells and those type of things. Right now, we manually do it or we use a ten percent bleach and water mix that we spray our blocks down with or our cells when inmates move in and out of those. But a lot of hospitals, this has been around for a long time, hospitals use UV lighting where they roll the UV lighting in. It's three hundred and sixty degrees. It sanitizes in a matter of ten or fifteen minutes. They go on. So those are costly as well. So I made a phone call today. So Adams County just purchased one. So he gave me contact info for them to be able to look into those things. There's some air purifiers that we can put into our air handlers that will constantly, you know, courthouse is looking at those as well, that can go internally into our air handlers to help purify the air. There's also ones you can put in the cell, cell block for the day rooms themselves that will continually recycle the air and do some purification there. So those are some of the other things that we're looking at right now.
In the manner that I asked, is it, it's like, like you mentioned, anything that you get free money sounds great, but then they have ongoing expenses with some of these as well that as you look budgetary-wise.
Yeah.
They don't seem like, from what you mentioned, the scanner might have some ongoing costs.
Yeah, I'm going to find that out. Commissioners brought that same concept up as far as is there maintenance requirements or cost involved in that body scanner for continued maintenance upgrade. Those are things I'm going to find out next week. So yeah, I do need to take those things into consideration as well because those funds obviously aren't going to be there for that.
Right. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Sheriff. Does anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Okay. Next item up, I think Lisa was able to email the property tax levy limits and the circuit breakers for each of the taxing units. I understand that we can review these or look through them or we can basically make a motion that we're not going to take any action on or to make any recommendations at this point in time. So obviously it's several pages. Does anyone have any comment or question on these? It did offer up a, well, Lisa, maybe you could go in more detail as far as the over sixty-five deduction was the?
Yeah, for twenty-twenty circuit breakers, the main circuit breaker that is used for Wells County is the over sixty-five.
But as far as anything that we're going to do with any specific taxing authority here, we're doing really, it's basically a do pass. So and, and we've looked at the minutes and I guess there was a motion to take no action as I guess if we want to do that again, we can. So unless anyone had any questions, I had a chance to look at it. If anyone have any comment or question on the topic, it's before us. But if, if there isn't, then we can make a motion to basically say we've reviewed it and then that'll end up in the minutes. And that's about as far as that goes really. So with no, no recommendations from my point of view. So does anyone have any questions or comments on those? Well, I could take a motion to
I'll make a motion.
Motion to just say we've reviewed them.
Yeah, say we reviewed them.
Second set's motion.
Steve has a second. Does it favor? Raise your right hand. That's a six oh. Okay, motion carries. Okay. I assume we have the library board here and I don't know all the people in the room. So if possible, you don't have to take your mask down, but if, if possible, Sarah and Kim, if you could come up. Kim, of course, is the council appointee. I had asked them to come before us and answer some general questions on how they do their budgeting, how they have structured the operation of the library. And I'm not sure if the rest, if there's more board members here. If you wouldn't mind, could you introduce everyone? Because we don't know even, or I don't know everyone that's on that board and actually who you were appointed by, to be honest.
Yeah, I'm Deb Johnson from Walton Harrison.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Steve Taylor in a twenty-second. I have one for you.
Okay.
And I'm Dustin Brown, appointed by this body.
Yes. Okay. All right. Great. So everyone had a chance to look at the questions that I put out there. I've basically gone through and asked how the project as far as the building, the, the, on time or on budget. So Sarah was good enough to forward those answers on to everyone. So I guess you could just give us the quick rundown on the quick questions and answers if you'd like, because at this point, unless someone had more questions or comments to add to it, that's really what we were looking to do. So because from, from my point of view on council, and I'll just go back to this, we have appointees from the council and I think even the commissioners, but yet I know that we've never had the library board appointees ever come before us that I can remember. And that's something that for me, maybe it's just something we should try to do a little more often. And that was one of my questions in there that, that I actually had asked about. So if, if, if you don't mind, we could just go through those briefly and, and do that. So. Just, 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 just one through six, the quick and easy. Sure. We don't have to read the whole, we can summarize if we choose as well. And again, if anyone here had any other questions, it was opened up that everyone could ask questions in addition. So I don't know if anyone did, but just certainly we're just trying to get, I was just trying to get it out there that people could at least know who these appointees are, who appointed them, what the budget process for the library was. Because honestly, yes, we could go to your meeting, but you're our appointee. You can come to ours.
I don't know if anyone's been in the library, but it's turning out beautiful at this point. We're on schedule. We've had a few delays just because of COVID and shipments, things like that. But it looks like it should be done October fifteenth. So everything's pretty much on budget and good to go. Do you have anything new this week?
No, lights are still delayed. A lot of the parts have come from Mexico, which is completely shut down. And then other factories that are shut down, and Pennsylvania closed completely for a while. So things delayed for the majority of the project. It should be done September first as expected. But then of course we have punch lists and then we have to finish your punch list and we have to have final payment. So the majority probably won't be done until September fifteenth. And then the lights when they come in should be done, punch list, final payment, October fifteenth.
But you're open now, right?
Oh, yeah.
There's people that can go in and out and there's no sections that are closed, for instance, or some portions of the building you can't use. It's, the areas that services are in, it's open?
Right, yeah. The areas that services are in are open. We kind of scrunched everything on. So the first part, we were all scrunched on one side of the building. Well, they worked. And then as this one finished, phase one finished, we moved over to phase two. And of course, that was kind of in between the time that we weren't really sure of COVID, not COVID.
Sure, sure.
So we were kind of trying to move our building back and forth with masks and face shields.
Sheriff, do you have any plans for any type of celebration once this is up and going?
I think we're going to wait.
I know the COVID thing's going to throw
I know. But I think we're going to put those masks. Hopefully we'll be okay. Yeah. But I think we're going to wait until all the lights are in.
Sure.
Everything's cleaned. They're completely out and we don't have to look at construction people there. So probably up to the fifteenth.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Second question was regarding closing during this pandemic. And I can't speak for other government offices, but as Sarah put in here, we followed the guidance of the state. They wanted all the libraries to be closed. And to go against that, I think, might have been a difficult thing to do because I'm not sure they even understand COVID fully yet. And how is that transmitted? And how long does it stay on books and other things? So I feel like we did the right thing, especially with children being out of school. They're social and they would want to come to the library. That was my biggest concern. And how would you keep them distancing? And do they even understand the distancing and all of that at the time? So I feel like that was our best option at the time and still believe that. And we opened up as we could, curbside. I think it's gone pretty well.
Right. We still have a few people that use it.
Yeah.
For the most part, people come in. And we were physically closed, but we still continued to do everything we could. We had projects, we worked, we were still shelving, processing, ordering. Our staff that did programming actually took every program they had planned for the summer and completely turned it virtual. So the first story time we aired on Facebook Live had over two thousand views. And they worked really hard trying to just rethinking that, you know? We're all so about community and coming together and how do we still portray community and coming together on camera. But it's gone pretty well. We now do kind of take and, take and go programming. We were only curbside and I think we had our first in-person team program last week.
So you've done some things or added programs that you didn't have prior to COVID?
Right. And we're now like stories, there for a while, the publishers allowed us to record live of reading their books. They no longer allow that. So it has to be, or they can't be a recording, it can only be live. So we'll still do a virtual story time. So we'll have live story times where, you know, the age limits are passed, it's socially distanced, but we're also going to stream a, a virtual one for those families that just aren't comfortable and come back and go.
So you'll continue this well past this pandemic as it sits today?
I think people really liked having that virtual option. But especially like if your kid is all, is, is sick and stuff, they can still watch, even if it's COVID or not COVID.
Sure.
Still sit there and watch the story time when you're not infecting other children.
That makes sense. I wondered how you were going to evolve the program so that instead of groups being in the building
Right.
doing things, if you were going to be closed, what were your courses of action? Because there could be another closure.
Yeah.
I mean, that could happen again.
It could be. Hopefully everybody
Well.
Hopefully everybody, that's what we're supposed to. They won't close us. But yeah, no, the, the curbside worked really well. We know more now about the virus on books. There have been studies done. The CD has, CD has done studies and taught us how we can handle that too safely. I know we're like curbside in a restaurant, it's materials taken out too. It's not used by anybody else. Where our library books are in someone else's home for who knows how long. And yeah, how long does it have to quarantine before it can go back out? Can it go back out? We know more about that now than we did at the time. And we did kind of a mix. So it was take and go programs where all the material you need was in, in a bag. You picked it up as you went curbside and then you went online and watched a video of how to do it. And those have gone, those have gone pretty well. I don't know if the state's going to allow us to count on those programs, but they're a little
They gave a little guidance to them on that.
They're a little behind on our, on our ability to count stats.
Okay, okay. Great. Well, let's say that's, that's good to hear. Because I was curious how that closure affected the interaction with the public as far as how you could evolve into a different service if you can't be inside on-site.
People lined up all around the building for the wireless and
Okay.
Eatering and mini vans.
Okay, good.
The next question was looking at the library and other county populations. And I think the first report that was put out really wasn't a strict comparison. So I asked Sarah to pull a bunch of information together. And she's going to have to explain that part because there's a lot out there on the, it's all public, but finding it, putting it together, two different things.
Understanding it.
Well, let, let me put it in the context if you don't mind. And, and I'll give some, some background on this. You know, initially, when I was elected on this, on this council, historically, and, and I'll put this out there, nobody likes to talk about salaries and raises and compensation. It's an uncomfortable topic. It makes everybody uncomfortable. But in government, there's a book. It's this fact book. It actually lists a lot of information about average wages, salaries, and how counties compensate staff. You know, for me, we, our county is in a certain category and it's in a grouping. They rate them by twenty-five to thirty thousand, thirty to thirty-five and so forth. So when I got elected, there really was no set system for allocating funds for courthouse staff or even elected officials. And I said, well, instead of having to wring your hands and debate and wonder what to do, let's work with some numbers, something that at least has some guidance or reference. And so our county is roughly about twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and something in this book. Now, those numbers move around a lot. You can say it's a little low, a little high. It's based on the census from 2010. So these numbers are not ironclad and stated in concrete that they're exactly correct, but they're, they're a guideline. And so this body had historically been using that for the last, what, Vicki? When you and I got on the same time, probably five years. So we look at that as it relates to the elected body, what they're paid. And so we just tried to look at these averages for the counties that are comparable in population. And long, long story short, you know, the courthouse staff can look at these numbers too. And they just happened to mention, they said, well, can you look at all county government offices or similar offices that are taxpayer-funded? And that's why this came up. Because that question was posed to me by someone in the courthouse and I just looked into it. It was just a brief, quick look and it's like, well, jeez, that's a big difference. Let me see. I'll have to study that a little more. And that's when, just like you say, those counties may be not relevant as far as libraries go, but they're relevant to our courthouse. And that's what started that conversation. And that's why we're here today. We're just wanting to get it out there for people to see, feel, think about, know, and then say. We're, it's informational. And there's certainly nothing wrong with gathering information. You're right, there's a lot out there. And there's a lot of ways to look at it. But, so, my goal here is to not make people uncomfortable. It always, there's a sense that that's out there, but let's not be that, okay? We're not trying to do that.
No, I know. It's not making us uncomfortable.
Good.
I just wanted to explain that the counties you picked, the libraries within those counties don't have a population served of the entire county. So they also don't have the same assessed evaluation of the entire county. So like, Clay County, it's a public library, it's a township library, so it only serves 8,471 people. So obviously, the assessed valuation is only for the people they serve. And that's the difference in budget.
Sure.
So it would be like comparing the county's budget to that of a hamster township. Obviously, they don't have the same assessed valuation. They don't have the same population that they serve, that the county serves.
Sure.
So, and I kind of laid out, some of the others were around 10,000 in population served, and I think one was 4,000. But with the differences of that, did you have any questions?
Well, I didn't, after glancing through it, I was gonna open it up for others to, if everybody had a chance to look at the information that Sarah presented, did anyone have any particular question on the topic? I mean, there's a lot there. It's a big page with lots of information, so you could spend a lot of time on it. And nobody wants to be in a council meeting that long. I'm confident of that. But what, what, what I was just wanting to get at was that we at least looked at the numbers, and that people were familiar. Not to go through the minutia of it all.
Right, but you have to go through the minutia to be the correct number.
That's right. And, and or how it's, how it's to be viewed.
Right.
But, you know, again, if, if someone asks, if a staffer in the courthouse asks me to look.
Then you can.
I have to, I have to at least go look at it and then ask you to give us some information. And, and I don't like to do it in private meetings. I'd rather do it in an open meeting. It's just easier for me. So, but as I say, unless someone particularly had some specific question they wanted to ask on it, I was comfortable with the information that I saw. So, did, did anyone have any on question three?
Not necessarily on question three, but is it the desire of the council, or, or you, Mike, as a council president right now, to have the, the library staff come before us on a biannual, annual basis going forward? Is that your desire going right now?
That's a question, that's another question.
I know, that's, okay, I'll get to that.
We'll get to that one. I was just gonna cover this one, if there was anything on that they wanted to add or comment on. Did Vicki or Chuck, anybody? Okay, well, we're ready to go on to the.
I've always appreciated, Sarah, that you're available. If, you know, because just getting this recently, you know, I have a chance to go over with you if I do have questions. So I do appreciate you putting it all together. But just in the early stages of looking at, I didn't see anything that was there. The only comment I would like to make is that we all appreciate what the library does, and I, I feel bad for all the public comments you may have heard. I know some of the calls I got, there's a reference to, I'm just reading one right now, a library mafia, which I thought was kind, I've never heard of such a term in my life, all the way down to illegal use of funds. I mean, a lot of stuff that is floating around publicly, and I try to ask people, tell me who's saying this stuff so we can clear it all up. That's not fair for you to have to hear this either.
And my staff.
When it's in your staff and everybody else, and so, or be prepared to go for war.
Yeah.
I mean, so, just publicly, whoever is, wherever that's coming from, because I get in, I say, well, tell me who it is, and I'll talk to them. Well, they don't want their name to be known. Well, I say, it's not like my staff coming to me saying, I got a problem with someone, so don't tell them.
Right.
How much you go fix the problem?
Yeah.
Well, I can't fix the problem without knowing who's behind some of it. So, anyway, Sarah, just for you and your staff, it's not fair when comments are thrown around that way, so.
Thank you.
Just so you know that.
Which is why we're here.
Yeah.
Well, I think we all hear rumors, and that's part of being a small community. That's fine.
Yes.
Once it started affecting the staff.
Well, it becomes personal.
Yeah.
And, and we're better than that.
We felt like we had to address it at that point, and.
And I appreciate it.
Obviously, there's something, there's some disconnect here.
Yeah.
Sure.
That, that the community is thinking of.
Good. Okay, so we're on to number four.
Okay, who prepares the budget? There is a definite process for that, as Sarah laid out here. We have a budget committee that meets with the director. Then we go through to the department, local government, finance. Then it gets presented to the board. You know, we just have a normal process like most do with our budgets. They have a compensation schedule determined based on how long they've been working for the library, what their schooling has been and so forth, so.
Does the, I was curious, does the board actually engage with looking at that budget and allocation of the resources, or is that really solely the staff?
Do you look at it? Yes.
Well, you look at it, but do you say, well, hey, what about, why don't we cut this and move this here? Do they really just say?
Yeah, that's the, the budget committee. So we prepare the budget. We look at the last year and then the first six months of the current year, and what was spent, what has been spent, what we see as budget needs for next year, and possibly two, three years down the road, and how that affects our budget. And then they review it, and they say, well, what about this? Maybe this will be better, and maybe changes in adjustments for it.
Okay. Anybody else on number four? Okay, on to number five.
And this was where you were asking about, you know, we feel like semi-annually, whatever would make sense to maybe have a little more in-depth of what's been going on, those kinds of things, makes perfect sense. Obviously, you're, the fiscal body, but we have the board oversight. I can tell you, there's so much that goes on in those meetings that I certainly didn't know about before I got on board. Very thorough, but obviously, you need another look at that, and I, I think that's perfect.
Well, I said, I, I had thrown out quarterly, but semi-annual could do the job too. I, I just know that if we have people that are representing the council, appointees, and we never talk to them or see them, it seems like we've missed something here because we're not really engaged. And that's something that, you know, I, I always comment that Leon Burnings is a sewer district guy, and he's at almost every meeting. And that was before the sewer district actually did anything for years and years. So that's a dedicated appointee. I'm not suggesting every meeting by any stretch.
Sure.
But I'd like a little more engagement, and I'm sure that rest on this body might agree that, that might be.
And maybe that could tie into after the budget's been done and everything, just have somebody come give a quick recap of where you guys were at.
Yes.
Just after the budget's done, just to tie, tie into that timeframe.
And that might just clear up some of this communication they've got out there somehow.
Exactly.
Yep.
And then you don't know how to, well, that back down to what's really true.
Exactly, yeah.
And I think that that's important, because, you know, you have people who look at their tax rate and what, how it's all divided up. And then you have people who don't care. So, but those people who look at it and they really analyze it, we would have some answers that we haven't had in the past.
Yeah. No, I think that's, that's a good thing to bring about. Any other questions on that?
I mean, I would just make a recommendation, it would be twice annually. I think that's adequate. I would not say quarterly. I think that's too much.
So if we want to say January, July?
I mean, after a budget.
Maybe after their budget and the six months.
And then, yeah, something like that. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so after the doctor's budget, so October?
Yeah.
Or November?
It's like November, you could just say six months from their May, you know, November and May then.
Yeah. After and just before.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be some dramatic formal event. I mean, again, it's just an engagement with this, with this body, of course, so.
And our appointee should be the one that should come.
Yeah, they, they should come, or, I mean, obviously, we'd like for the council person to, certainly, and Sarah can along too, but by all means. As I say, Dustin, no offense, I, I didn't know, we really have never given any guidance as a body to our appointees ever. And that's something that, when it really comes down to it, maybe that's our failure as well.
Right.
Because we've never told our appointees, we're looking at this going forward, maybe we should consider this. There's no, there's no communication or engagement, and that's something that, you know, just like this county today is taking action on several capital projects, maybe that would enter into that conversation sometime. And that's something that, as a community making plans with taxpayer dollars, it, it gets everybody on the same page.
Well, we need to be clear what our expectation of them coming before us is.
Exactly.
Okay, what are we asking from Sarah and Kim?
For, for us, you know, the building project as it came up was one of those things, it was kind of an evolution, right? There was a building committee, they had a conversation, we did a public, or you had some gatherings. We really were outside of that up until the time of getting funding together. So capital projects are the first thing that come to mind, only by virtue of what last year was. But, but just at the same time, if, if the library is gonna be taking steps to do things, we'd like to know before we actually get to that place. So I, I just think that in the grand scheme of things, if we're doing big projects, it's good to be on the front end of that plan if we can. But either way, just a general view of their budget and the tax rate is not a bad thing. That, that would be what happens with other boards that, that are engaged with the council the same way. So.
Well, I remember Chuck and I went to your meeting, and I really appreciate that because that was the first time that I had really, you know, done anything. And we really, you know, took us through every step and everything. With my background, I, I was a little disappointed about the bar escape, because I go, oops, that wouldn't have happened if I was doing the appraisal, you know. But, but anyway, I, that was my first time, and I appreciate, you know, everybody, you know, having us in and doing some stuff.
Well, another set of eyes never hurts anything. It really does.
Good, okay. Last one is, should the library's staff wages be in line with other county offices, or at a minimum, other libraries our size? Sarah, I'll leave this one with you, because.
As far as other libraries, I'm guessing that kind of ties into number three as well. So the larger thing that I've given you, we are in line with pay scales of other libraries that serve the same population as us. If you were only looking at the total of the libraries we talked about with question three, then obviously, we're not in line with the library that serves 8,000 people. As far as county offices, where's the, like, where's the disparagey there? I mean, I don't know.
Well, we're not trying to get into the details of one job to the other. It's just a general consensus. I mean, philosophically, a person can say, let's tax to the max, spend every dollar. Or you take a conservative approach and say, let's tax what we need, and then allocate the resources accordingly.
Right.
It's just a choice, right?
So for our pay, we do compare to other libraries. The state gives us the annual report for, that the library submits to the state library every year. And we do review that with the budget committee to make sure that our pay scale is where it needs to be. We look at the consumer price index for cost of living, if you do cost of living or not. But then that's also dependent on what's now the MLGQ, not the ABUGQ. They like to change things on us. And whether that's even possible, the nature of what we do, the state says that our pay should be around 60% of our operating, because we're predominantly a service-oriented building. But we have to have people at our desks to provide service. If you have programming going on, you can't leave the desk empty. And then, yeah, we're there nine to eight Monday through Thursday, and nine five, nine six Friday, nine two Saturday. So as far as the number of staff, that's what we're predominantly part-time, is to help with scheduling the different blocks of hours, and so on, part-time. And, like, am I answering your question? Yeah.
Basically, I mean, again, there's, nobody necessarily knows how you structure your salaries relative to the workload and who's doing what. I mean, that's a, again, we're not trying to run the library here. We were just simply putting questions out there to get some general answers to. And it's not gonna go into the minutia of job for job making the comparison, but, you know, we, we will.
I don't know if we could.
You can't. It's, it's not.
Because we're not the same.
That's right. It's not the same. But it's just something that I want, I posed the question because it's an interesting thing, that if I have courthouse staff draw comparisons, they always say, well, why is that so much different? The jobs aren't that much different. But we're not trying to draw that parallel, so. But if they ask me, I should at least ask you. So, so that's kind of how that question started, but, so I was just curious what your take on it was. So the state gives you the payroll guidelines to work off of, and then you work from that?
They give us like a percentage guideline for your budget, like the structure of what our budget should be. And then as far as pay, I believe we've always looked at other libraries our size, and then as well as our surrounding schools. And then we take into account education, years of experience, how long the benefit of the library.
Do you longevity pay then? Is that what it is? You have a pay rate that's based on, you've been here a year, you get this much, and then you get a raise based on time served?
Like a, like a staff increase.
Yes, like if you were, like the sheriff's matrix pay, because he gets it.
Yeah, up to a certain limit.
Okay.
And then once you've been there so long, which most of them have been.
Okay, sure.
You can no longer get that. You just get cost of living.
Okay.
Increase. I know, like myself and I, we only get cost of living. We don't have longevity pay for our positions. To get my foot in the door. So, I mean, I think we're, we're pretty blessed that we're able to, to pay according to position, and then what position requires, and then education, we have to share years of service, years of experience. And we have people that are coming from other libraries with years of experience, so.
Okay. Sarah, what, what percent of your employees are part-time out of career?
Are part-time? We have 13 full-time and 14.
Especially parents that don't want to work full-time.
Oh, sure.
But it also helps keep our costs down.
Look, it's benefits, right?
Exactly.
Because they're not qualified for benefits. That's where I was kind of going with that. It's sort of the majority of them are at least part-time. Do you see some benefit costs?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I think that's important, but, I mean, and it just works well, you know.
Yeah, no.
For coverage as well. Like, if someone is sick, or, which, we might be covering 14 things of psych time for this, and, but that just helps that we have part-time, that they're under that 30-hour commercial hours.
Do they, do you pay into the state pension plan for?
We do.
Okay, I just, okay, I figured.
And then we offer the option for our staff to pay into their start.
Okay.
But we, the library doesn't.
You don't match or anything there?
No.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Well, that was the last question that was on the list. Now, that's open for anybody to have any comment or question as well, so. But it does give a little, a lot of clarity on some things that were brought to me as well, so.
No, thanks for coming in.
That very.
Providing this in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. What was next? Okay, so miscellaneous business. I always leave that for Lisa. What's the miscellaneous, do we have any miscellaneous business?
We have any miscellaneous business, so we'll just have to talk about lit changes.
Ah, yes.
The last, we would, if, if you want to make any lit changes, we would have to publish something next month to be, have a public hearing in September. So this is your last chance this year, if you want to do any changes to it.
Which is raise a tax, is increase the tax. I mean, it's never going down, right? They never go down, they only go up.
Hey, Lisa, for those of us in the chief here, you're over here.
I could hear you over here.
Sorry about that.
If you want to take away any of the lit credits and make any lit changes, it would have to be advertised next, or this month to have a public hearing in September.
Okay.
To have it for 2021.
Okay.
So this is, I, I know you've talked about it a little bit.
Right.
Throughout the year. So this is just the last chance.
Okay.
The real question here is, will we be able to cut our budget and balance and get to where we need to be for the next cycle? And that that's in consideration of either reducing a credit or changing a tax rate? We, we have to get to that point very shortly here. What do you say, do we, can we go through some of that budget process before we make the decision to even put that out there? What's the date that we need to get that out?
I would have to advertise.
I think we have enough information sitting here today.
Yeah, can we do it after we get through some of the budget process?
Right.
Possibly the 11th.
Might be 11th?
So maybe at the 11th meeting we discuss, or, or meetings.
We know, we know, and these move, these numbers are moving around. We are what, 200 and, I hate to say the number because it's still moving, but.
Yes, it's very fluid right now. But if, if I can move some levy over, which I think I can, it'll be about 190 we would have to cut to have a zero operating balance. But that includes all of the raises that people have asked for.
Right.
Okay, so the 190 would. Okay, so the hundred ninety would be able to give all the raises, we'd have to cut other places to get the balance.
So, that's not bad.
Yeah.
No, it's not that bad.
I mean, last year, we had to do, what, five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yeah.
But, but technically, we don't want to be at a zero balance.
Right, right.
So, we always like to retain.
Right.
Generally, a comfort zone is one fifty.
Right.
So, technically, it's three hundred and fifty. If you, if you do the math that way, it's closer to three fifty than two hundred.
And I talked to my D L G F guy on when tomorrow, so that could change.
Right.
I could have failed miserably.
Can you email and let us know?
Yes.
Not if it's miserable, just if it's good.
It's a, it's a bit of a moving target, isn't it? So, if, if, you know, again, we're, we're a little premature, but, you know, our growth quotient was.
Four point two.
Four point two percent, and with the, the budgets that were presented, that's our number, give or take. So, again, nobody likes to raise a tax, but then nobody likes to have to cut.
Right.
Critical services out either, and that's just where we're, we're going to have to get to.
With the budget sounds doable.
It's very doable, that's right, it's very doable.
Without raising taxes.
Right. Without raising taxes.
I agree with you.
Yes, as long as the numbers all add up at the end.
Yeah.
Because there are several moving parts to it, of course.
There's no surprises, yeah.
So, but.
Without a doubt, we need to study a little bit and.
Yes, everybody has their.
Revisit this on the eleventh, for sure.
Everybody has their budget book, more than happy to start taking a look at what, what needs to happen. We will be having our August eleventh get together for an all-day session, and that'll really give a little more guidance as far as what each department's looking to do or need to do, and that'll be a big part of it as well. So, it, it sounds like they're not comfortable with raising a tax today. Nobody ever is, right?
I think it's hard, because.
It is.
Now, people have been unemployed, but then they're employing again.
Well, that's the dilemma we're really into, isn't it? To change your tax rate, going into what, we don't honestly know what's coming, but then not being productive with where you could be or have to be when you get to that point, is that too, if you let the opportunity pass you by, then you're into another budget year short, so, and that's bad too. So, so we know the eleventh, we've got that in mind, we also have a library board appointment that we have some applicants. Initially, Kim didn't want to do it, now she does want to do it, is that right, Kim?
I did not know Ted was going to have to go off, and we just know, like, two of them have been around a longer time, it's been typical, but she says we're changing. Covid isn't over yet, we're not sure how that's going to pan out, um, building should be done, but we just thought it would be a better, since we have several new on the board.
There were some applicants that had sent applications forward, I assume everybody had a chance to look at them, like, it's, it's like always, right? There's someone that wants to do it, but then there's some others who applied as well. So, does anyone have any comments on the applicants that are out there, or that we're looking at at the moment? I mean, does anyone feel strongly one way or the other on the topic?
Just, just a comment that one of the applicants is also on the list for the county commissioners.
Yes.
And the county commissioners, I do believe, voted to make that appointment on the seventeenth.
Okay, so yes, that's right, they did say they were going to push back a little bit.